The whole time, I thought, okay. I don't think they need a flyer.
How are you?
You didn't hand it to the dog?
No, I handed it to the dog. I just crossed the street and came on the other way.
Doug, fill out that bottom. Rip it off, put it back in there. Otherwise, otherwise you're not gonna get paid. They won't pay you one of those books.
Is that basketball?
Yeah. Thirty more luck with basketball. Thirty dollars, and you get, you win thirty every half and final. So there's sixty-two chances to win thirty bucks for thirty dollars. Thirty-one games.
When, uh, when finally have thirty bucks on?
Uh, you, you take, you fill one out and you can pay me next week or whatever.
Alright.
Mark, how much of the city do we get, Coach?
Um, quite a bit. I think out, out Heath Road.
Did we get, did anybody get Grant, even Morgan?
I didn't see that.
I don't know.
It didn't look like that was.
I don't know.
I don't think it was.
Maybe not.
I would've.
Thank you.
You know, um, it was brought to my attention today that, uh... Um, it was brought to my attention today that, uh, the Advocate ran their endorsement article in yesterday's paper.
Yeah.
I don't get the actual paper.
Oh, I read it.
But the online version didn't happen and doesn't happen.
Uh, but it was very, it was very, it was top, it was top of the page. It was prominent. I didn't like the headline, but...
I didn't either, maybe some of them were gonna say something against it.
Right, but they were on board, it was, well, the article was writ, well-written.
Yeah, I, I thought it was...
The headline, it was goofy.
What was the headline?
It's not like we didn't need it yet, like, we were gonna need it, but it's like...
We needed, the, the pitch was that, I... We were both at the interview, and the mayor said that this, this is, this is like an SOS, and, and you, same terminology used in your article. But the, the point was that, that, you know, we're, no, we're not sinking yet, but it...
Right, taking out of context the way they made the headline, if anybody didn't read it, they'd be like, they didn't read it. I heard you on the radio, too.
Oh, is that right? Well, you know, the thing is, is... They were, the, the, the opinion piece, the, the endorsement piece was correct in the standpoint that we do have some money in the budget, a stabilization fund. And that we would burn through it in short order. But what it didn't make the point of is that you don't wanna have your back against the wall financially before you decide to do something. You know, you don't wanna have a carryover of nothing before you finally realize, hey, maybe we need more rent. That point, I thought, could've been maybe brought out a little bit more. But I thought, all in all, not bad. Kent, we was talking, they, they, they didn't put the endorsement, uh, on the website. It's still not on the website. The one that ran in Sunday's paper, it's not on the website. I know I got up Sunday morning looking for it on the website and didn't see it, and, and it's not up there today either.
You just throw that away. I don't, you don't need that.
You don't need it to win, but don't you wanna know what your numbers are each week?
No, I wanna be surprised. They did send me a check one time.
I gotta check.
Yeah, I don't look at it either, I just like getting the checks from low.
Okay, well, I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna put your name on the inside here, and I'm gonna put it in my drawer there, and so every so often, I'll look and see, see if I know it yet. I'll just be checking every time. Cause, uh...
You need the bottom part, you said, right?
Yep. Yeah, if you're not sure what your name is, just put my name in that spot.
Always kicking, aren't you?
I still think if a person sells a winning book, gotta get a buck here for something, you know, for it, but we don't get nothing for selling them.
Well, the thing is, how many winners are there though, I want to ask?
Yeah, that's what I mean, so if I sell, you know, multiple winners, I get multiple bucks. That would entice people to sell more, cause they'd get more chances out there. If I sell one book, I got one tip, though, so...
So by thirty, we better let Eddie get started, looks like he got a long way there. So go ahead, Eddie.
Uh, but Eddie talks fast.
I went ahead and printed out, you know.
I'm in a few words.
The, uh, first item is just a grass today, and we had two properties that just found out over the last month. That total came to two hundred and ten dollars, just be forwarded down to the, uh, county office.
I've never seen one that is black.
Council agenda.
I've never seen, never, if I've ever seen one like that. If you're ever gonna skip a meeting, this is the one. Did you see the agenda?
We ready for number two?
Did you see this? Look at that agenda. You can have that.
Oh, you got it.
Did you look through it or anything? We aren't doing anything tonight.
I want your story to read. I was, you know, we were out...
He, he did.
He, he, City Council did absolutely nothing.
I'll see what I can do.
You see the agenda?
Give back salaries for me, if you guys didn't know.
How you doing? How you feel? Okay, you kids, be quiet.
The next item on the agenda is the demolition grant program. The Newark Community Development Office is handling that for us. They went out and, uh, they sent out a bid for the asbestos removal and demolition of the building. We're due to have that back in the next two weeks. When they get that back, they're gonna give it to John and I to select contractors. And then, uh, from the time the contractor signs those agreements, they have forty-five days to get rid of the structure that they demolished.
Just for point of information, the address is?
It's the, uh, I'm not sure if that's what it's called, but it's right by the old theater, the drive to theater. There's a two-story house right back in that, kinda area.
It's a house, but not the theater?
It's not the screen, it's the house and all the surrounding buildings.
I thought that the screen had massive amounts of asbestos in its construction.
Well, this, the program only applies to, uh...
Residential houses.
Oh, it's a shame.
Hey, Eddie, um, I remember one of the four properties that we had originally identified was one on the north side of Lickingview. And the property owner said that he would prefer to get the property taken care of and, and, and get it in shape. Have we been by there to see if the property owner's making any progress, or...
We haven't stopped by, but he hasn't. It's obvious that he hasn't done anything to it yet.
Okay.
I talked with a gentleman on my passing meeting.
Uh-huh.
Like, David's out.
Uh-huh.
He said that, uh, he had a problem with, uh, a vehicle that blew an engine. He had to take, he spent some money to buy the vehicle, but he's, he's got the roof covered with a tarp and that, and he's gonna put the roof on it, he says. And he's working on the inside of it now, because he'd been bringing something out, and he was working on the inside of it. And he said, I will, he says, I will be working on it, so...
Okay.
Just keep close by.
Okay.
And I talk, he's a, he's a younger guy, I, I'd say he's probably in his mid-forties.
Okay.
And he said he just didn't hope that they didn't tear it down, and, and, and do his best, so...
Uh, the next item is GPS mapping. The four E preserve back, uh, on the south side of the river. I'm supposed to meet with a couple of, uh, area bike riders, or mountain bikers, to try and map all of their paths back there and put it into RDIS. So the fire department has a way of identifying where people are if they get hurt or stranded, I guess a couple months ago.
Baca Vard, one of them, Baca Vard.
I don't know if he's actually gonna be there with, with us, but... His name's...
Yeah, he's, he knows that area very well.
Yeah, the... Who's the guy, him's Bike Doctor?
Sean?
Yeah, 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 he, uh...
He's the one I'm supposed to meet.
Yeah, yeah. We had, gosh, it's been a few months ago now. We had a meeting with him and with, uh, Bill, uh...
Lam, uh, Lamar?
Yeah. And, um...
From the bank?
We, uh, we were gonna try to do it then, but there were so many leaves that were on the trees that the GPS couldn't get a signal. So now with the leaves off the trees, we'll, we'll see how that goes. Um, I think it would be, um, I think it would be very helpful for us to try to map that area and maybe put, um, you know, some sort of, of, of location identifiers there for, for people who are either biking or hiking in through there. We had an incident, you guys may recall, Chief Huggins, uh, talking about it. We had an incident, I think within the past twelve months, surely, of a bicyclist, uh, being injured back in there. And, uh, it was hard for the bicyclists, obviously, to get a cell signal out for the same reasons as the prompts of the GPS. But then it was also hard for them to identify where he was and how our equipment could get closest to him to, to, to offer assistance. And so I think the first step to this is, is that we have, you know, a, a, a GPS mapping, and hopefully with the leaves off the trees now, we'll be more successful in doing that. We could do something as ea, as easy as, uh, you know, at, at various, uh, particular points or intersections of paths, have, you know, some sort of a colored stake or pole or, or, or something there that, that at least would, then our police department and our fire department could have a map with those locations. And if something happened, somebody could say, oh, we're about, you know, a hundred yards from the blue pole. And, and then that would give our safety forces at least an idea of where they're at in that big, uh, area.
There, uh, if I could add, uh, in Canada, where, uh, there's a lot of snow trip, that they go through there, and that is wild territory. And every so often, you'll come up on one, on a sign that'll say, you know, that you're on X trail, and they're, they've got GPS coord, coordinates right at the bottom of the sign. I know that's where it has to been. And that's right there, every so often, and I talk to the, the guy, you know, he goes on the trails a lot, and he said that they're really helpful. They get out in there and get twisted around, and it helps them to find where they're at, so...
You know, the idea behind it is, it is a nature preserve. I think we want to try to, uh, preserve, I guess, I might be on a couple of federal word than that. Preserve its, uh, its, its, its natural state as much as possible, but i- if, if people are gonna utilize it, which of course they're free and able to do, uh, in the case of an emergency, it would be helpful to have some way for our police and fire departments to know where they're at. Where they're at, yeah.
I think Brian, one of, this, and they should appoint somebody, you know, to meet with these guys, you know, get with the two chiefs and have somebody work with them.
Well, that's, that's what we've done, that, that's kinda what Eddie's kinda helping to do here.
Hey, Eddie, any more, any more questions on that?
The, uh, given the day that Thanksgiving runs on, the planning commission department has been in the middle of a week, and fifteen, so...
So Kent, this, that, does that suffice as public notice for you, or do you want us to send you a press release?
I guess press again, I think.
Okay, alright.
Make it official.
Okay.
The, uh, the city's purchased twelve, uh, Christmas banners, or season three banners, to be installed on the, uh, poles that were erected out on the median, seventy-nine. There's been ideas going around, like, I think it might've been Mayor's idea to try and see if the local businesses would be interested in maybe sponsoring, uh, banners or something like that, and put up on the poles throughout the various seasons. That's an idea that I think's getting tossed around right now.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice if we had, you know, uh, seasonal, you know, winter, spring, summer, fall, holiday ones. Um, I've asked John Groff to work with, um, Jenna on this, and to, I think initially, contact the businesses that are right there along that stretch. It would, according to John, it would require us to modify an ordinance saying that a business can't advertise in a roadway, I think is how John put it. And I suppose if their name is at the bottom of the banner, having sponsored it, that would probably be considered an ad type. We could make an easy adjustment to something like that and, uh, giving an exemption in that area or something. Um, but, you know, I, I think we discussed this before, my thought was, first approach to businesses that are right there along that stretch. Um, we would have twelve banners for each group, you know, winter, spring, summer, fall. Um, allow them first shot at sponsoring some of those banners. And if there are still some banners then that, uh, do not have sponsors, then we can open it up to the business community, uh, as a whole. Um, so I've asked John to work with Jenna on, on that, um, so hopefully the businesses will find that as a nice way to, uh, promote themselves, and also make that, uh, you know, area look, uh, look nice with the banners.
Any more comments or questions?
No.
Uh, a few project updates, really. The first one is the Hopewell Drive paving project, uh, that's currently scheduled to, uh, rule out, I think in the second half of two thousand fourteen, early half of two thousand fifteen. There are two components that were tossed around as possibly being backed on to the paving project. John and I went ahead and, uh, spoke with Joe Henderson and got estimates for all three components of the overall project, uh, for planning purposes, in case we have any issues too. The first one was obviously the paving, which would go from, uh, say about seventy-nine, all the way up to say about thirteen. That total came to, uh, you guys have three hundred and twenty thousand on your paper, but it's three hundred and twenty-five thousand. We actually got the estimate late today. That is fully the actual paving, the one that I said. LCAT has set aside a maximum of three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to be put towards our eighty percent match. So that would be the federal funding call. Uh, based on the three hundred and twenty-five thousand estimate for the paving, our match would be two hundred and... I don't know, sixty-four thousand, I'm sorry, it's possibly sixty-four thousand. So that's for the paving, which, uh, there are two other portions. One was, uh, traffic signal installation at Lickingview, Hopewell Drive. Uh, just to install the traffic signal at that intersection, it would cost another hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And the third component would be to add a turn lane, left, left-hand turn lane at the Hopewell, uh, thirteen intersection, you're heading east, heading upwards to the, uh, radio, the cemetery radio station. The cost of that project, uh, was estimated at three hundred thousand dollars.
Three hundred?
Three hundred thousand.
That's in turn lane?
Yes. That, federal funding has, uh, required, so the design would...
S P ten, S P ten. Twelve-foot paved shoulders.
As it's done, it would be all but paved shoulders.
And a three-to-one green?
Green, wait.
Not right now. That turn lane would be something that we just do on our own, forget the federal funding, forget the thing, go out there, you dig up the berm area, you put asphalt, wind it out, re-stripe it, done, you can do it. A lot, lot cheaper than that, a lot, lot cheaper.
Can we do it on our own?
Are we allowed to do that?
Yeah, yeah.
Just don't have, if you don't use federal funding...
Just don't take their money, you do how you want it, you wouldn't have to drill plans or nothing, you just...
Pay, pay the berm, just...
I mean...
Had this conversation with Geller five years ago.
Asphalt on both sides, that's how we're gonna, you can get you a turn lane.
That's why we got the three estimates, just to see.
We had, we had this conversation, uh, earlier today, Eddie and I got on the phone with, uh, Scott from Joe's Henderson. Um... The design for it, per ODOT's, uh, rules, ODOT wanted it designed as if the traffic was traveling at fifty miles an hour, correct?
Correct.
Which, traffic on the one side is thirty-five, traffic on the other side is thirty-five, I think the traffic on thirteen itself is thirty-five, so nowhere near is it fifty miles an hour, but that was where they wanted it done. The, it also called for the twelve-foot paved shoulders. And, um... So obviously, at, at, to the tune of three hundred thousand dollars for that project, if we were to tack that on to just the repaving of Hopewell Drive, our match for the whole project would increase by two hundred thousand dollars. Scott said that if we were to do this ourselves, we could probably design a very functional and safe, uh, left-hand turn lane for probably one fifty, max. So if we do it ourselves, it will cost us less than if we were to tack it on to this project, because of, because the maximum, you know, money from LCATs is three twenty-five, or three twenty-three. Um, which means it's maximum for the project, it'd have to be about four hundred before we'd have to kick in a hundred percent for anything above that four hundred figure. It would save us fifty thousand right off the pop, right off the pop, just to do it ourselves. Now, with our, uh, couple of important notes here. Number one, I think that a left-hand turn there is very needed. Um, I would venture to guess that anybody that lives on the east side of town would agree that, uh, it's frustrating to see a green light and only see one car go through the light because that car was turning left, and the eastbound traffic on Linville, uh, was such that nobody else got to go. Um, but with our current revenue levels and our current, uh, allocation of money into the capital improvement fund, we would be hard-pressed to, to do this hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project. If we, if the income tax, um, measure passes and we're able to allocate the, you know, million dollars or so each year into the capital improvement fund, we could probably get this done in the next three to four years. So, yeah, Eddie and I already talked to Joe's about the ridiculousness of, Eddie can tell you, I, I was, uh, it was ridiculous.
I mean, I've said this for years, you can just go out there and just do it yourself and be done with it, and no one ever know, but the, the other quick, easy fix would be to do a split phase where you would let one side of the traffic go first, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And let the traffic going east or turning south, that left lane, that light would turn green, everyone else would still be red for, you know, five or ten seconds to get that first car or whatever, go before it, it switches through and stuff like that.
Thirty, so.
You know, well, you, you know, you time it to whatever you need it and everything. But the only bad thing about that, if it's not the first car, if it's the third car that wants to go, two cars go through, the third car stops, and then you throw it back everywhere, you know? Without that turn lane or dedicated, like, proper weight in, so... But, you know, that's like a, and then it changes traffic patterns, and then you get people crashing because, you know, they see one car go and they think, oh, it's time to go and look at the light. There's ways to do it a lot cheaper.
And the accidents that have been there are the people that are making the turn to go up the hill are over far enough that the car behind them will scoot out around, and the person who's coming west, or coming east, uh-huh, cuts in front of them, and then boom, this guy's...
Yeah.
Side swat, you know, and it's...
Well, that's the thing, I, I, I...
Probably get through the intersection at least twice a day.
There's a clear need, if we were to do it ourselves, we could do it cheaper and probably, uh, in a more common sense manner than what ODOT would require us to design it. But if we don't have the revenue to do capital improvements, we can't do it. Um, so, looking at the cost for the paving, which was three, uh, twenty, twa, sorry, three twenty-five. That Lickingview traffic, so, you know, at a hundred, a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, you know, a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, that would mean that the city, that would mean that the total project cost would be four fifty, which would mean that the city would kick in seventy-five thousand, I think that's the right math, seventy-five thousand, up to that four hundred thousand match. And then the additional fifty would all be from the city. Uh, so basically, the city would have to pay fifty thousand dollars for that traffic light on Lickingview. I'm not willing to say that it's worth spending fifty thousand dollars on, because I haven't heard from the police department that we have a lot of accidents there. So I think basically what we're looking at on Hopewell is just paving. And then we'll take, the LCATs will cover eighty percent, we'll cover the twenty, um, and, uh, and that's how we'll get it done.
How much is our permissive tax? What are we collecting license plate?
We get about a hundred and fifty thousand a year.
We stack that up against a left turn lane. We'd have to allocate two years of license tax just to take care of a left turn.
Yeah, we had to allocate, we had to allocate two years with a license plate tax in order to repave and recurve the Wedgewood, uh, addition. That was, last summer, that was a three hundred thousand dollar, um, project.
And right now, we've got a hundred and sixty thousand allocated to farmwood drive.
Yeah, yeah, Eddie's gonna get to that here.
And, uh, what's the, uh, O D, uh...
Yeah, Eddie, Eddie, yeah, Eddie's gonna get to that here on these other ones.
Oh, I didn't see that, I'm sorry, I didn't turn it over. Sorry, Mark.
No, that's fine. Stealing Eddie's thunder.
I'm sorry.
The next item is the thirty-street construction, which will be done next summer, two thousand thirteen. That estimate came in at two hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven. Of that, the city's match is gonna be around seven thousand, which will have to include the bike tent.
That's the capital improvement, uh, planning document, that, that'll come from capital improvements.
Eddie, was that, did that include the little piece by Old Garden too? No?
No. Not on, not on the south side of, uh, not on the south side of Seventy-Nine.
Okay, I was curious. I quit going that way.
Let's just take that section back and chip it in the ceiling, you know? It's, it's just that road. It's, it's just that road.
And the part of thirty there where the entrance to Kroger is and where.
Where they do the pass down there for the absolute worst.
I know, I'm slow.
The next item, Thornwood, Thornwood Drive Culver, that's gonna be done this summer, so, two thousand thirteen. The total estimate for that was two hundred forty-six thousand. Of that, the city's match was forty-nine thousand. Which again, has to include in the budget. The next item is the, uh, Thornwood Drive paving project, which will be done summer two thousand fourteen. That estimate came in at four hundred eighty-seven thousand, eighty percent into three eighty-nine, six hundred. And then the, the locals match, which is the match for east, north of Lick County, is ninety-seven thousand, four hundred. Of that dollar amount, the city has a seventy percent share, which comes down to sixty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty dollars. And that's something that will be paid in two thousand fourteen. The, uh, the, the final one is the seventy-nine, uh, project. To finally wrap these up, we, uh, Joe's Henderson, the city and the DOD, we all put a punch list together, gave them to the contractor to work through. That's what they're currently doing now, is mainly regrading certain areas or fixing those things here and there. One of them is the median, uh, basement right there, south of butt. So, there are a number of different items that could change during this time. I actually talked to Dave Johnson of the DOD today. They were planning on coming in and doing the molting tonight, starting at eight o'clock. They're gonna do that and then replacing the rosewood for several pieces of fire. Drivers. And also, there's some rain days that the DOD has awarded to the volunteers. To see a push-in project and to find case that's bad. So, hopefully they'll be.
Are you getting any kind of feedback your businesses while that's red, uh, how, how, back in the good old days?
I honestly, I haven't heard any, maybe you wanna say?
Have you talked to Chris May then? Chris May hates him.
I heard him.
He is very upset. He said the two stores are doing gangbuster business and that was down. I said Chris May at, at Honey, or at Dairy Queen is not, doesn't like the median at all. I mean, he attributes all his bad business there on that, on it because his other two stores are doing better than ever and that one's doing worse and stuff. That used to be his best store, now it's his worst store. Every time I talk to him, he just gives me an earful. Pass that on.
Panera looks busy.
Huh?
I said Panera looks busy.
Panera's corporate.
What'd you say?
I said Panera's corporate, excuse me. He's a local one.
The last item is just an update for, just an update for local projects that are going on.
I think you speak, uh, I'm having trouble with you.
Yes, just a recap of some projects that are going on right now. I just throughout the community, uh, Community Bank took over Dr. Kruger's office. They're planning to have their grand opening November fifteenth. I can't remember exactly what time, but.
They find much more parking and asphalt areas over the other states and quarters or something?
They're gonna make a loop around it, which I thought. And eventually put in a drive. Covenant Furniture, they've had all of their plans reviewed and approved, with the exception of the architectural plans, where they haven't finalized what they want the building to look like yet. They're planning on coming to planning commission.
Fifteenth?
While they were planning on it, but we haven't received.
So that's not only Jennifer?
No, it's not.
They know that we're having the meeting on the fifteenth? Okay.
I, I, I was talking with their engineer here, the excellent, like, plant, uh, plant house manager and stuff. That way I'll be able to give them a, uh, one, yes. He said he's still here, going along.
Can we provide a rendition of the last planning commission meeting, a couple? With the dormers in front, I thought the owners had.
They weren't agreeing to that. They haven't agreed on what is the final, what's the final.
No, it's taken them on.
Yeah, trying to help them every, which way we can, the special meetings and everything else, and they just.
Burger King, they're doing a renovation as well, both interior and exterior. They've actually been, the planning commission got it approved as well, so. They'll be starting that real soon. And the final one is just Ulta, I think it's a cosmetic store.
I think, yeah.
They're going in over at the mall, they, uh, they're changing the facade to their portion that will be the match of the design. I think that's what they're counting on, they're very pointed down, starting to renovate this. That's right next to Dick's Sporting Goods on the east side of the building.
The, uh, back trail from Hopewell to, uh, about forty open, I had a good cut a two weeks ago. And it's open now. And I just thought I'd let you all know that, you know, where it comes out there, right across from, uh, the high school, Liquid High School, there's a old train station. They, the county owns that old train station and that big barn sitting right behind it, they own half of it too. So, they discussed that and, um, they asked more questions and I told them to contact Deb Cole, she's on, on that committee. But we had quite a discussion about it, they were wanting to do some changes up there. And so, Deb Cole being, I told her to see her. But it's, it's a nice ride up there, I haven't been all the way, but right now, I gotta get my minor freeze. Thanks, Eddie. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I, and I don't know if this is appropriate for the meeting, it may be where until after, um, it's, I know that's, since you have zoning, um, it's, it might be, be part of a zoning issue, but it probably needs to go to police too, but it was, regards to noise, do, do I need to take that to a different committee or is that something we could at least talk about here?
Yeah.
Plenty of time.
Yeah, we can talk about it, yeah.
We've got a few minutes, you're right with that?
Sure.
Yeah, and it was Papa Foddy's, I'm sure, but he saw the email from Douglas Osborne.
Yeah.
And, uh, I checked with Chief Shepherd. Well, just to give everybody a little background in case they don't know, he's complaining because on Thursday nights, um, they continue to play loud music, he lives about a quarter mile away on Harris Avenue. And he said, all you hear is boom, 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 and he's, you know, he's trying to sleep. So I sympathize with the guy, I've been in a situation like that before where you have a, a neighbor that, you know, is very courteous, so.
Keep in mind, the, uh, the outdoor patio area there faces north. The speakers face north, Harris Avenue is south of the building.
Yes.
So it's not like Harris Avenue is right across the street facing this place.
He says he's a quarter mile away approximately.
And which, what location is it?
Papa Foddy's there in the strip where my doctor is there and.
So I, I talked to Chief, not Chief, he was off, I talked to Lieutenant Mason, Lieutenant Mason, uh, said that, um, obviously they had some issues with the fighting and that they had the, the special duty officers there on Friday and Saturday night. And Mr. Osborne really didn't complain too much about Friday and Saturday, he said, no, it's during the weekend, I, I can understand they're gonna have a little loud music and, and he said, as long as they shut it off at a reasonable time, and it sounds like they're doing that on the weekend for him, it's this Thursday night deal. So I talked to Lieutenant Mason, I asked if we had these sort of ordinance. And, uh, you know, maybe, maybe you have to be quiet after a certain time of night. And he said, no, uh, they don't have one that states specifically the time of day or the, uh, under disorderly conduct and peace disturbance. It's section five oh nine oh three, and I'm not gonna read it, but I, unless you want me to, but I will say that, um, well, let me just give you the real quick condensed version. No person shall make, continue or cause to be produced any loud, unnecessary and unusual noise or music which is likely to annoy, disturb or agitate the comfort, health or safety of others in the municipal limits. The following acts among others which may not be listed here consider to be loud, unnecessary and unusual noise and as such shall be in violation of this section. Radios, photographs, et cetera. The using or operating or permitting to be operated any radio, stereo amplifier, photograph, musical instrument or other machine or device designed to produce or reproduce any sound that would likely to disturb the comfort, peace and quiet of neighboring inhabitants or vehicle operators. Any sound that is produced or reproduced from devices listed above that may be clearly and definitively heard beyond a distance of fifty foot from the structure, vehicle or source of sound shall constitute a violation of this section. So, uh, it, it doesn't matter what time of day it is. So Lieutenant Mason told me, he said, Brian, I'll be honest with you, we get calls from citizens in the neighborhood and, hey, the neighborhood down the street's having a party and it's loud. And he said, we'll go out and tell, you know, we gotta turn this down. He said, but we've never enforced anything upon any business. He said, we just don't. He said, until we get the support of council and the support of the mayor, then we're really not gonna enforce it because we've never had their support. That's what Lieutenant Mason told me, that they have never, the police department's never had councils or the mayor's support. And I'm not, I'm not saying this council or this, this mayor here.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that in the past, that's what they've been told. He said, so until we get that support, how do we, how are we gonna enforce this? I mean, obviously, this sounds like it's, it's good enough to enforce. Now, he did say that he was gonna go talk with, um, is it Indy maybe? Whoever's kinda overseeing that issue down there, he went and talked with them, saying, can you please talk to these people? And ask if they'll turn it down on Thursday night. So, I need to talk to Mr. Osborne and find out if it's been any better, at least last Thursday.
It would seem that it would need to be turned down on any night.
Well, yeah.
Not just Thursday night.
It's bigger concerning, like you said, he said, they understand they're operating the business, they're gonna have entertainment. Friday, Saturday night, not as big a deal unless it's two or three in the morning. He said, but when you're trying to, you know, get some sleep, you gotta go to work the next day and you hear that boom, 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 he said, that's.
I'll tell you, I've been in there before picking up pizza when they have karaoke night, I hope they're not piping that out.
So, um, I just wanted to bring up this meeting.
Grab a mic.
And see what people's thoughts were and, and maybe. Maybe, I don't know. Yes?
I was gonna suggest maybe you could talk to the business and see if he, if he's pointing south that is in somewhat of Harris direction, maybe he can point his sound system at least west.
Fort Dunore, right?
Well, no, it's out toward, uh, track, Red River Track.
Well, you went to. That's what I mean, when the, the front of his building, the, the entrance to his building faces north. And I believe the speaker, I was just there for lunch today, the speakers on that patio then face north. And Harris Avenue is south of that building.
Well, Harris was actually south of the back of the building. He was specific about the boom, boom.
You ever hear, over there, Deb, where you live?
What?
I don't think you really meant to do that.
I told him day at work, they said, how do you hear that? I said, well, I got new glasses, new hearing aids, now I'm working on the rest of me. But going back, uh.
Well, I, I guess, and, and this is a conversation I guess I can have with, uh, Chief Shepherd and Lieutenant Mason, but, um, I don't think I nor this council have ever discouraged the enforcement of our ordinances. Um, so, but, uh, I, I think, I think that the best approach is to first approach the business question and just, yeah, talk to them.
My question is, in November, why has he even got speakers out? That's what I was saying over here. Yeah, that's true, you know, you're gonna sit out there in the snow, you know, I mean. Yeah. Turn the speakers off, let them drink, smoke their cigarette a little quicker and get back inside and buy a drink, there you go.
Well, yeah. I was gonna say, uh, you know, it was two safety committee meetings again ago and two, two that I brought up to, uh, Tony Shepherd about the noise there, cause like, somebody called me at work, they used to work for the city of Newark and was complaining about one of his rental units and the people and then that's when he mentioned about they were, had the problems, they would have a special duty officer and everything was kinda taken care of.
Yeah.
Subsequently, I talked to that, the guy that complained and he said, it was better if things were, you know, from what he's getting complaints from his renters, it was, it was better than whatever and stuff like that, so. It may be, you know, just that Thursday night thing or something like that, or, you know, or when they got the doors open, those speakers or, you know, so. I think it's a work in progress, you know, and like I said, I think the business owner realized he's having a problem, that's why he got the off, off-duty, you know, policeman to be there and stuff to kinda calm things down, so.
Huh? He had fights down there.
Right, and he went, I mean, you know, if he's a smart business, he didn't want to get that kind of reputation cause then no one will go there for anything, you know, so.
Well, I think that, you know, I was speaking for myself, but as a member of council, uh, I'm with you, Mar. If we've got an ordinance and it needs to be enforced, then let's enforce it. I mean, or why have the ordinance begin with?
Yeah, exactly.
But I think we need to go talk to the people first and just. And that's one that's enforceable because when we talked about the, the loud noise coming out of a car, the question is, how do you enforce it? You know, somebody's driving down the street, you know, are they gonna get, are they gonna get their, their noise machine out and run down the street next to him?
Over the years, uh, here, these things, we don't have the equipment to properly monitor the decibels on a prolonged period of time. It's not just five seconds of it's a loud noise, it's gotta be a prolonged period of time. And Tony Shepherd will confirm this. Uh, we don't have the equipment, we don't have the manpower to sit around and monitor it to actually enforce the ones we have. We'd have to sit there and look at it for thirty minutes.
Well, I think probably analogy that, that, that Lieutenant Mason shared with Brian as far as a pride, like, like, uh, uh, an outdoor party at a personal residence, you know, the police come up, they listen. Yeah, if it's loud, they go, they knock on the door, they tell you, knock it off. If they have to come back, then you got a problem. You know, that, I think that's the, the way that that type of situation's handled and probably the type of way that it could be handled for a business too. You pull up, you listen. If it's really loud, you go, you say, hey, this is really loud. Um, I was more than fifty feet away and could plainly hear every note being played or whatever and, and, and you say, you knock it off. And if, and then if you have to go back later, then, then, then you got a problem.
I think John was the one that told me that, well, those loud mufflers, you know, these small
Oh, yeah.
rousper, or what they call them, and he said they listen to them if they pop. You know, you can hear some of them, they really pop, and, uh, he says those are the ones we nail. So they got their own instruments and their own human being.
Well, and you know, I mean, fifty foot's pretty simple, I mean, we don't need a decibel meter to decide what fifty foot, I mean, if you hear fifty foot, fifty foot, and if you hear from a hundred feet, you know you're safer. I think the biggest concern for me is to, Lieutenant Mason said he was gonna have his officer talk with him and see if they'll turn it down. Step one, step two, I just wanted, before I called Mr. Osborne back, I wanted to let him know, hey, we do have an ordinance.
Yeah.
That prevents this. But I, I also wanna let him know that, you know, the council. But I, I also wanna let him know that, you know, the council, the mayor is willing to enforce our ordinance if they want to abide by, you know, the law. So I just wanna make that call to him.
It's not our option. If it's a law, it's a law.
That's right.
We have to say disregard.
Yeah.
Well, what, for what Lieutenant Mason said, I just wanna make sure the mayor's gonna go and say, hey, do what you can politically and then after that, just, just go tell them, you've been warned and warned and warned. Here's what we're gonna have to do. I don't know what the repercussion is because it doesn't state, uh, what the penalty is.
It doesn't?
You're getting into a really shady area here. Uh, because I've got, uh, Sunbelt Rental next to me. At seven o'clock in the morning, it seems like they back up everything on their lot.
Oh, with the beep, 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 beep.
Everybody in Foxborough can hear that. I mean, what are you gonna enforce? What are you gonna do?
Well, I, I, I think, Wayne, it, it, it takes some common sense. There's, you know, when it's, when it's Wednesday night at eleven thirty and you, you're trying to sleep and it's twelve thirty in the morning and it's still just as loud as it was before and, and hasn't, you know, has been unceasing. You know, uh, you, you do have to apply some common sense. But, uh, like I said, I, I, I think Lieutenant Mason's analogy with a private party is pretty, probably pretty accurate. If somebody calls and complains, that's when you go look at it. If nobody's complaining, nobody's being harmed, then, then.
You got a whole array of important incidents that you're gonna enforce. I've got, and again, same neighbor. They come over there with a sweeper and make dust cloud the size that you cannot believe. And it drifts over onto the car lot that just washed their cars that pays me good money every month to rent. But the police cannot enforce your ordinance. They can't throw stuff on our property. So what ordinance are you gonna enforce and which ones aren't you gonna enforce? I understand common sense, but I think going to talk to the business owner first and discuss it with them is the right way to go and see if they will.
That's all we were saying.
That's what we're saying.
And I, and I, I think that guy's, I think that guy's reasonable enough to, that.
Well.
I, I don't have any reason why that he wouldn't try to.
He showed that when he put the private duty police.
Yeah.
I think if he comes and says, my driveway at three or four o'clock, good morning. You'd hear from the shopping center. It's like slamming the, the things I know, the dumpsters. I'm not there. And if they slam them in the truck when they empty them or what?
All from back behind there?
It, it's a matter of, it's just a matter of sensitivity. I've never complained about it. Yeah, I walk outside, the dogs behind me bark, bark, bark. That's my neighbor. That's shopping center, my neighbor. They're paying taxes.
Any more questions or comments? Uh, two things, Mayor, I forgot to bring up. Uh, I was gonna pass them on to Deb, them to Bob. Uh, the guy was a lady from the foundation that built the bike trail. They asked me if, if we had any plans of, you know, how we would like to connect, uh, our riverwalk bike trail with that one, you know, we've talked about it before. And also they're looking at, uh, go on the, on the west side of Hopewell and taking it all into Newark. I know Judge Hoover was there and that's what he would like to do.
Huh?
And where the railroad track ends there, Hopewell, they wanna continue on into Newark on the old, uh, railroad.
What path would that connect to?
Well, the ones there now, you know, the railroad track.
You're talking about the one that runs behind, uh, the old track that runs there behind the Maritor property and that?
Goodwill.
So what I'm trying to think of in my head is where would that track connect with any existing bike path?
Downtown Newark.
Like east, east side, there's a, there's a, there's a path.
There's a path there on the east side of Newark.
If you, if, if you know where the new, the newest bridge is that they, they did.
Yeah.
There's a bike path that runs along there and kinda goes over to the.
There by the YMCA.
Old Texas.
Okay, but that is west of seventy-nine. What we're talking about is a railroad track that's east of seventy-nine.
You're talking, you're talking about railroad track.
Behind Maritor.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's on, then Maritor's on the east side of seventy-nine.
The Goodwill, the Goodwill store, right to Goodwill.
Yeah.
If that, that.
Well, they're not talking about former railroad track. They're not talking, just talking about trying to get it down to the closest bike path that connects downtown Newark.
Oh.
Won't cost us anything to have this foundation to do that.
Good luck finding that path.
Yeah. But mine, I thought we'd be interested in is, uh, helping them decide to know, to how we hook on our bike path that goes out to Rockwell or out to the Port Authority there at, uh, by the high school, you know.
It's already hooked.
Huh?
It's already hooked.
It's already hooked.
It is.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right there on Irvingwick East at the, at the bridge, our Hoback one comes out to that bridge and then you go east across the bridge and you hook up to the, that path right there.
Yeah.
Yep. I forgot about that. I didn't tell them. Any more?
Yeah, that, that, that path that runs down Hebron is already connected to our system.
Yeah. And then I said something about a, uh, a stop sign here at, uh, Irvingwick. They did. Stop sign missing. Now they, somebody told them there was and I said, that's why I told them, cause they knew that. That's all I had. Everybody else, forgive me.
Maybe, maybe they'd throw some money at, right there at, between the Tressel Bridge and Lincoln View. They throw some money to get from the upper level down to our tunnel, you know what I mean? Maybe do some work in there. They have to do conjunction with the school because that's their property stuff. But if they would have money to, to do that, that would be great because then you could go and use the tunnel instead of going across.
Yep.
So, you know, if they got money, they could do that. The other thing I'd be worried about if they connect all the way downtown is now we're crossing Hopewell Drive. And if they're doing an at-grade crossing on Hopewell Drive, we're looking at, I mean, with the traffic or anything, I just think that's just, you know, an accident waiting to happen there.
Yeah.
It'd be nice if they wanna cross that, that they somehow figure out a, you know, a tunnel system or something there. Cause I would not like to see an at-grade crossing there.
I think what the stop sign, or it was a warning, the one that we, on this side, the, uh, on Hopewell, on, uh, Lincoln, Irvingwick, there's a warning before you get to there, there's bike crossing there. But he said he didn't think there was one coming from east to west.
There's one on the road up the top because you're coming down the hill. There's one that says bike crossing. And then there's one.
Painted in the pavement.
Going east, it's painted right in the pavement, yeah. In both directions.
Yeah, that's right. That's right in the road.
Anybody, any more questions? We're over.
I bet there'll be plenty to watch for the next week or so. I would bet on it being over by Wednesday.
You don't think?
I have three weeks.
Three weeks minimum before we end.
You do? Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised. You're right.
Three weeks minimum.
Maybe minimum.
What's that?
Before we never hit the president, three weeks minimum.
You know what, though? I had a nice conversation with Sue Peanut this afternoon.
Yeah.
Cause I'm concerned about what traffic's gonna be like on the thirtieth.
You know what I'm trying to say?
She said that the early votes and absentee votes, they will have them scanned and tabulated by seven forty-five. And that's all it is. And it's just a matter of bringing the machines in, plugging those in. And that's, you know, and we'll get our results.
The people that took out absentee ballots and didn't turn them in, they have to check them against people that did provisional ballots, make sure that people didn't have to vote it twice and so. And they can't count those for like until the, while absentee's got a chance to come in.
They're not even allowed to.
Yeah, not even allowed to count them for like ten days. So there's ten days of, of waiting for thousands of, of possible votes.
Oh, I'm just, I'm worried about, I'm just worried about ours.
Oh, yours? Yeah, ours, yeah. I'm talking about the president.
That's all I'm focused on.
Yeah, we'll know about, we'll know about ours real quick. Yeah, once they plug the machines in. Except what they'll do, they'll start with little township way out here voting in and anything. And all of a sudden, they'll, they'll never get to heat.
Sue, Sue said that Heath's machines normally get in pretty quick after.
But I can't figure out why they're not all there at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, they're not in one place.
It's like, okay, he goes, look at, looks him in his car, he goes out to dinner, so now then finally shows up with them, right? It's like, okay, there's six, six precincts, they're all in the same spot, pick them up, put them in the cart and go.
Yeah.
You know?
But they, you know, they, they do the president send it in and then they do the others and work their way down. Once it's started at the bottom.
You see that sometimes with like, you know, precinct watch calls. That was right beside that. I know, it's all right in there. Where that guy gets, stop for coffee and what else, you know?
If they had consolidated other precincts or whatever. I think so. And, you know, part of the problem is not just the money. Part of the problem, I think, too, is.
People that work at home.
That will be on the thirteenth.
That's right.
Major problem.
That's for sure. Cause the last two elections, they, they had.
But still, you know, I could probably, I, I, I could, I could wrestle off three or four.
You mean for, oh, for committee?
Communications that look that better than, than that one. And I, you know, they're saying they haven't had four. Yeah, but you also haven't had.
They may not have lunch if gone in, I mean, if it's.
With just lunch.
Tell them, or, you know. That's gonna be, that's only a mess.
Could always. But, you know, we're gonna monitor. And if need be, um, I have Lieutenant Mason since the front.
So just committee meeting. If he doesn't have one, you know, you know, that's a question, skip it. Could always move it to.
Sue said, you know, another day back here or something. You have problems?
We can do it on the seventeenth.
We don't have much going on with.
And I'll.
Carson, Dave Boucher and the street, you know.
I think we're not a problem. Oh, I do too. I think in the morning when their parents take their kids.
It's a school.
That's a holiday. I think it's gonna be bad. I think it's gonna be bad around lunch. I think it's gonna be bad afterward.
I come out of there tonight because I had to go over and set up the machines.
Are you working tomorrow?
Yeah.
Quarter after five.
January.
It took me probably three minutes to get out of that and, and.
Yeah, just take a right.
Take, try and take a left. I was taking a right.
Yeah.
Try it. If somebody wants to go across it.
I think that's it every day.
Where's that at?
At the church where you gotta vote.
No, I mean, it's never been a smart place.
Well, I mean, I'd rather have it at each church.
Trying to get out.
I'd rather, I don't have it at the high school.
That much traffic.
I mean, I think even, cause now the more the schools is, that might be tough. But when school lets out at two thirty.
You're retired. You can go anytime. Who goes to prime time?
I would say the high school would shut it down.
You're like everyone else.
I, I know the best.
I don't understand this and I gotta.
Strap.
How's go?
We have policemen, we are.
You don't wanna be. Always go. It's like my mom, she goes all the time.
And now we've got an option.
Why don't you go other times? When you have a right hand, what are we doing?
Goes down to go. If we get it, then we're gonna have a exit access there where they go down and come up.
When, when this church lets out on Sunday, I can't.
Plus, that's what I'm with Owen Mason. She's gonna wanna say, I already voted.
But there's a policeman standing there.
Oh, yeah. Kate, you wrote that article on the city.
I had a TV caller, I didn't know on TV. Then we call other people, my cousin, they'll start with the answering machine, they'll start talking to us and they'll pick up because they're doing the same thing again. You know, screening.
I know.
And they get, they go, oh, yeah, I called something.
I couldn't remember, I couldn't remember what it was.
Usually when they, Sue just took it for a while.
I'll give you time to get up out of your chair.
Oh, we're getting close. So we about ready for finance committee? Somebody got all their thirtieth street comments out of the way. All right, we'll call finance meeting, we're six thirty-two. We have one legislative request, amend the pay ordinance. Pay ordinance right now lists all of the positions in the city and a salary range for those positions. The intention for, um, Linda Richards is that she will retire as the accounts payable and budget person. And then in two thousand thirteen would rehire as the assistant auditor. She already wears both of those hats. But the assistant auditor is an unclassified position and we've already been through that. This is a position that's gonna be unclassified. There's no provision in the pay ordinance to pay the assistant auditor anything. So the pay ordinance simply has to be amended. Uh, Dave Morrison's gonna work on that. We'll take a look at all the pay ranges while he's doing that and make, make sure that everything works and that's what that's all about.
And just what we've talked about before.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just putting in the legislative request.
Her title would be assistant auditor, but in that ordinance.
Committee members' questions, comments? Any other, any other comments? Okay, under other items, we've got cleanup ordinance. Now, the cleanup, the, the cleanup ordinance isn't here yet, but will be at year end. And it's this, this thing we do every year. Uh, it's lengthy every year. There's little bits of money that needs to be moved here and there and so forth. But I, I just simply wanted to point out, there's a couple of, uh, I guess in the grand scheme of things, not significant amounts of money, but it's significant, significant enough that I wanted to just tip you off that these will be part of the cleanup ordinance. Uh, there will be interest that needs to be appropriated for the Franklin Avenue Waterline Project to the tune of about forty-one hundred dollars that was not anticipated and put in the budget when it was prepared a year ago this time. Cause that project was bid and so forth after the budget was prepared. So I just point out that there's, there's, we have the money, but it hasn't been appropriated. And, uh, uh, the debt service at the pool is two thousand dollars short. I don't know if it was a typo or, but, uh, it was simply an oversight that Linda Richards has since caught. But there's about, there's two thousand dollars short on that. So that'd be part of cleanup ordinance as well. And I'm just simply, uh, advising you of that now and that that'll be part of it. That's all I have. Anything else for finance committee?
Not much for caucus, is there?
You guys need a break after that lengthy finance.
You guys need a break after that lengthy finance.
This will be longer, that or your caucus?
This will be pretty quick.
Massive agenda.
Biggest decision of the night, who's throwing the invocation, Mr. Morrow? All right, anything else? Okay. I mean, the, uh, petition communication, that's all, utility, kind of thing, so, uh, Cletus.
Do what?
On the, uh, oh no, wait a minute, we got both John Geller and John Groff, haven't we?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh. Dick, you, you do the, uh, you do the John Geller ones and you do the John Groff, and then, and then, uh, Cletus, we do, uh, receiving file, communications after, we do each one separately. When, after Lynn reads the memo from John Geller about delinquent utility accounts, and then you, uh, make a motion to forward them on to the, uh, Lincoln County Auditor.
Got it.
And then after we do that one, then Cletus will do the one from John Groff about.
You do? Yeah. You forward that to the county auditor, and then we'll do.
We have nothing on first thing in there, we gonna have any visitors tonight?
Absolutely, no reason. Amen.
Just move right along here, man, you better be quick to the microphone tonight.
Nah, I'm not going there. But I'm not a person.
I didn't even see that.
One back there, one here, there, there.
Well, I think, I think I had one, someone opened a bottle of champagne and it went up, it went in there. It's going in there.
Turn them both off.
I don't know.
You go to your USA.
Probably not, if it's not dripping on your head, you don't notice it.
I've molded there.
Really? Oh my goodness.
Is that coming off the, uh, the lines or the? I didn't know, so, I couldn't even see that one further, I could see that one, I could see that one. Oh, they're here, right here, see this? Yeah, there's no. There is. Fix that real quick, something's leaking. Oh, and in the hallway, and then the wall, there's mold on the one.
We're prolonging capital improvements as long as we can, here's where the panels.